I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Phillips, if you would, give us the indication and the pledge of the flag, please.
Thank you, Lord in heaven, for this beautiful day. Thank you for all our many blessings you have blessed us with on this earth. Lord be with us and just guide us and direct us in this meeting. Lord be with all the first responders in this country, out of this country, everywhere, and all the men and women in the military taking care of our country where we can have three meetings like we have. Lord be with us, Lord, tonight. Make sure we try to make the best decisions we can make. Lord be with everybody here, and may they have a safe trip home, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff, I don't believe there's any addition or relegations. David?
Oh, we're just going to table it. I'm sorry. Yes, we have, we would like to request moving the MOA with the Florida FWC to right after Mr. Brandon.
Right, right. After, Chuck's on his way, I believe.
He could do it first, then.
Motion to approve the agenda. Okay. Got a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And I'm sorry, Rocky, you seconded it. I apologize. Okay, at this time...
Chairman, I was understanding that the replays for the other day was going to be rebuttal.
It is. It's going to be tabled one year.
Yeah, Commissioner, when it comes up, I'm going to ask to have that tabled to a time certain at the request of the applicant.
So, with that being said, as David stated, I'm Mr. Chris Win here. While we're waiting on Representative Brandon, Chris is going to come up and give us his demonstration here, or presentation, I should say. And Chris, you got the floor, sir. Chris is also a member of our TDC board, for yous that may not know that.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yep.
All right. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Chris Win. I'm a regional director with Florida Fish and Wildlife. Really excited to be here. As you see, I brought a little fishing pole here today because I'm fishing for a partnership with you all. The last time I was in here, I'll mention real briefly, was about two years ago, was asking to partner with you all at a fishing pier on Lake Montgomery. And thanks to your help and support, we've got that fishing pier done. People are out there fishing every day. Even heard that somebody got married on the fishing pier here recently. So, very excited. Thank you all for that, that support. So, why I'm here today is to kind of talk about this 500-acre complex that you all have on the north side of town. And you all are starting to break ground on Phase One, putting those soccer fields in. And what I'm, what I'm looking forward to doing is talking about a partnership to maybe explore doing an outdoor center. And maybe we call it Gateway Outdoor Center as part of a Phase Two or Phase Three. So, it's a very conceptual idea, but I've got a couple slides to go over today with you. And in the hopes that you all will approve the county signing and memorandum of agreement with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to explore this new outdoor center. So, let me go to the next slide here and jump in. There we go. So, as you'll see here, it's no, it's no shocker to most people that there are a lot of video games, cell phones, computers that our kids and families are on. And I want to do a quick shout out for a guy named Richard Lou who wrote this book called Last Child in the Woods. And he coined a term, nature deficit disorder. And what he's kind of talking about in this book is the lack of getting outside is kind of what's causing the mental issues that we're seeing in our society as well as the physical issues. So, I'm kind of setting some context here. Another context is some, some new industry research that has come out. And these are gateway activities. They're, they're activities that people get involved in and get hooked on the outdoors. So, these are things like fishing and hiking, and these are activities that we want to try to explore in creating this new Gateway Outdoor Center, you know, with your all's approval. So, just to kind of sum it up, you know, the vision here is to create a regional hub for hands-on exploration and education of outdoor conservation and agricultural opportunities. That's really important. Conservation in agriculture is a huge part of our culture here in North Florida, and we want to highlight this at the new Gateway Outdoor Center. So, the next steps is to hopefully get your all's feedback tonight and approval to sign this agreement, which is, you should have a copy of. And then from here, we'll get to work on planning, you know, next steps. I'm going to end here, and I'm going to tee up a video that I think you all will like. It's about a one-minute video, and then after that, let y'all let me know if you have any feedback, and hopefully we can get approval of this agreement to move forward. And before I tee up the video, let me do a shout out. Ashley Williams, please raise your hand. Right here, she's, she's one of my staffers. She created this video. She's amazing. So, we got to thank her after this, after y'all see this video. So, we'll go ahead and tee up the video right now.
Columbia County is excited to partner with that TDC to expand our outdoor opportunities in a regional sports park, but also to allow us to bring agriculture and outdoor activities to combine them with sports here in Columbia County.
Y'all might have to give Ashley a round of applause. I appreciate it. Good job, Ashley. You'll, you'll see some famous faces in that, in that video there. We, we were able to take a field trip back in April, and maybe I'll let some of the commissioners talk about that. And we also were able to capture Mayor Noah, Noah Walker in there as well. So, you know, we, we look forward to partnering with you on this, and please let me know if y'all have any questions about the agreement.
Well, Chris, I can say that, you know, we were all fortunate enough to make the trip to Perry, Georgia, a few of us, and that's the Go Fish complex, correct?
Yes, sir.
I, I've been going up there for 20 years, I know, to the Buckarama. I never knew it was back there, but it's, it's worth the trip. And Mr. Parnell, he kind of stole the picture there. I think he got the photographer behind him, the old show, but the, it was enjoyable. We had a good time and learned a lot. It's a, it's an amazing, amazing place, and I'm looking forward to whatever we can do out there to, you know, I know you dealt with this at the TDC, and it's, we're looking forward to the partnership, I am, and then so, we'll see where we go with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of like, my partners in crime here, we went up there and caught some fish, and if you've never caught a five-pound bass, reeling it in a boat, you should go up there and try that five-pound bass out. Now, I don't know how the big fish Mr. Parnell caught was, but it was, it was a task trying to get it in the boat. But believe it or not, I think all kids would love it. We were kids ourself that day. We got to go around and see all this stuff and do what the good things were. So, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with you. Let's try to partner up with you and see if we can get something going for our local kids here. And if you ever go to Perry, Georgia, I don't know what exit, remember what exit was, but it's got a Go Fishing sign there. You get off and you go look at it, and you'll like it.
Something to see.
Yeah, it was, it was an excellent trip. Enjoyed it. Our kids here in Columbia County, we need that. I grew up hunting and fishing, but a lot of kids don't have an opportunity. So, this is a place they can go and enjoy, experience it, and have a great time outdoors. So, I think it's a great partnership here, hopefully, and look forward to working with you on it. It's definitely needed in our area.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. I look forward to getting something like this in Columbia County, and I think it'd be a great asset. And hopefully it'll get some kids off the couch and get them out hunting and fishing. I, I know I enjoyed going with my grandkids, and even my kids when they were small, I raised all of them in the woods, hunting and fishing, and they love it. They'll do love it. I think it's a, it's a great sport for any kid to get into. And they learn a lot about outdoors survival and other. Yeah, it's a, it's a good program.
Well, we, I'll jump in real quick and say, sorry, we didn't, you know, we missed you on the field trip, and be happy to do another field trip up there to Perry, Georgia. And that is kind of the model that we're trying to follow. So, let us know if you have any feedback along the way.
Well, the Buckarama's this weekend, so you can kill two birds at the same time. But the...
Make sure when you kill the bird, it's in season. Sitting there giving yourself up.
Sound like you're talking from experience there, Rodney.
Ah, believe me, I'm a legal eagle.
So, board at this time, we had to move, we moved number seven up forward there. And so, I'll entertain a motion to go forward with this.
Subute.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Chris. Look forward to the, it's off and running now. Thank you a lot. So, I've seen a familiar face come through the back door there, and we're going to go back now to Representative Brandon. I think he's got something he'd like to address us with. And Chuck, looking forward to you. Hope you had a little bit of a dry...
Wit. Then I got wit. Always a pleasure to follow, follow Chris. I, I didn't get to go on that trip either. He invited me, but I've been there many times to the fish place there, and showed a lot of hogs and cows there. So, I'm really, really familiar with that, that facility, and what a wonderful thing they have there in Perry, Georgia, so you could have something like that here. The way we can assist.
I, I've been to legislators, the fund us, and stuff like that. It's none of my money, right? Chuck?
Yeah. I got my little cheat sheet here. Talking about funding things, the Speaker called me the other day. He said, Chuck, have you realized how much money you have gotten? And I, I'm like, sir, I've been so busy, I really couldn't tell you what we got. And he said, well, let me run that down for you. And he, so it got me to thinking, and I said, well, this'll be a good day, even though I'm soaking wit. And we've been at, we're always been, we've been dealing with problems at Union Correctional, and then we've been at New River Correctional, and I had to go to a meeting there in Orange Park, and we went on to Florida State Prison. So, we've been dealing with prison issues all the way. And then I was coming through that driving rainstorm, and it looks like they're, I hope they're building something up there at Baker Correctional. Y'all know anything about that? So, I didn't have time to stop and check on that project. But I will read through some things. It, well, I was really stunned when we got, looking at this. And County Manager and Assistant County Manager, y'all help me if I miss something here, but I'm going to run real quick through what we've, what we've been able to do, because the Speaker said, you know, we were looking, there's 120 legislators. He said, you're in about the top three, and I didn't realize that. And I've never been to Speaker or the Appropriations Chairman, and they're always number one and number two. But back in 1920 sessions, I'll run through it real quick, $750,000 for the North Florida Mega Industrial Park rail extension. Y'all remember that? Of course, that's, that's done now and in there, and you got a facility coming in there just right next to that railroad track. Fort White got $2,805,610 for water supply project. That year, we only had 45 million in road improvement projects, both for the county and DOT projects just in Columbia County. And the college got the first of what would eventually be $13 million for a new STEM building out there. And the city of Fort White got $35,450. I'm reading things that are all in Columbia County. All of them aren't necessary to the county commission. Some are going to be Fort White, some are going to be the city, and some will be the college. $35,450 for the mayor's railway park exhibit program. And then in 2021, Fort White got another million dollars on top of that two-point-some I just told you about. In Scott Money, Small County Outreach Program, Columbia County got about $2.5 million DOT road projects that year were, there was a 5.9 million-dollar interstate project, US-90 from Shane Way to Bay Avenue, $8,500,000. State Road 247, Brentford Highway, my 75 US-90, some right-of-way acquisition, it was all right at $2.5 million. State Route 47 from Walton Little Road to Southwest Brentway was another $1.23 million. And then the college got another $6.148 million to finish up that STEM bit, building to make that a total of about $13 million. And then, heading 22, we got $3,368,000 for the fairgrounds. The city got a west-side fire station to the tune of half a million dollars. And then the college got another $3 million click on STEM two building. That building's under construction right now, about halfway done out there. So, that was about 15 or 16 million there on the STEM one, STEM two buildings. North Florida Mega Industrial Park got almost $3 million, $2,959,000 for the Parkway, the road out there. And then we had another $36.5 million in DOT road projects in the confines of Columbia County. 23, back to the North Florida Mega Industrial Park Water Plant, that was $5,716,000. I'm sorry I missed that dedication a couple months back, but I think that's during the time we were in Tallahassee, and I just couldn't, couldn't get away. We got money for the Sheriff's Office Crime Lab and Maintenance Building that year, right at a million dollars, $908,000 there. Columbia County got $950,000, almost a million dollars toward the fire station replacement building. That's, looks like Fire Station 51, does that sound right? 51? Yep. Bethlehem Community Center, almost a half a million, $475,000. Fairgrounds, we're back out there with another, almost a million dollars, $985,000. Then the Police Department, Public Safety Building here for the city, got a new generator and some HVAC repairs that right at a half a million dollars. And the counties take that year on DOT and local road project money was 10.3 million, and that included some of the, and I'm not going to read all the roads, of Baskin-Narson and some others. And 24, for the sports complex out north of town, you got 3/4 of a million, $750,000. And then FGC, we got a million-dollar increase in their recurring base funding. That's just an extra million dollars that comes into their coffers every year, and also got their state employees on state insurance, which affects a lot of people that, that live and work out there and live here in Columbia County. Got the Swanee Valley Law Enforcement EMS Tower, the money to build it, $800,000. These Memorial Park, $50,000. Johnny B. Bright Park, $50,000. Old Columbia Theater Project, $50,000. Northwest Bell Road Extension Project, $1,500,000. Ellisville I-75 and US-41 interchange road improvements, $3 million. And I think that's the same time we probably got the, Mr. Kirby, to help on getting the DOT to give us that. Was it the water plant or sewer plant over there at the rest areas to tie in all that, too? Also had an Ellisville well redundancy project at $325,000. Fort White got another million dollars. So, they've got, that's about, about four and a half million dollars down there that they've gotten for water projects. And then now we come to this year, and Dawes and I always talk, and we try to be... We try, try to be strategic about what we ask for and what we try to get, but the longer I've been there and the better position I again get in, I try to get what I can get. And y'all realize, we had about two and a half, $3 billion of budget cuts this year. So, my job was to say, we knew that had to come from somewhere, but my job was say, hey, it ain't coming from our area, because I'm going to protect my stuff. So, I'm proud to say that Columbia County this year gets every project they ask for fully funded. I don't think that's happened to us yet. We had a total of 41 projects in the five counties that we now represent. That's the counties and all the entities, the schools and the cities and all that. And we got 31 through the legislature, and I think that probably was number one this year, 31 individual projects. This year, y'all are going to get $1,150,000. This is crazy to put the equipment, what we're calling Phase Two, to put the equipment on that radio tower that you got $800,000, I think, $1,000 for last year. So, the equipment costs more than, than building the tower itself. And then, once again, to help out the Ellisville situation, North Florida Water Utilities Authority, water system improvements, almost $2 million for y'all on that. That's $1.9, $1,900,000. Then out the college, in a daylight day, I sure would have appreciated it when we were walking those prison grounds, but new HVAC systems for both the Howard Conference Center, the gymnasium, and their automotive technology building. That was $1,500,000. Of course, we make sure to protect your PIL, your, your payment lieu of taxes for the private prison every year. You'll get $90,236 for that for the Lake City Correctional Private Prison. And then I think this will be the third year that you'll get $1,685,240 that we fought for three years ago for recurring money for your sheriff's office salary increases for fiscally constrained counties. So, what does all that mean? 41 projects, 31 we passed, and of course, passed in the Senate, too, and Senator Bradley couldn't be here today, but what a wonderful partner. The Senate and House sort of, you know, there was a battle with the governor, too, at times, sort of got contentious, but it's never been that way between she and I, thank goodness, that we work together. So, after all that, we had four projects vetoed. They were all in Alachua County. One was in High Springs, one in Alachua, two right there on the north side of Gainesville. But all in all, this year, it looks like Columbia County, if you count the road projects that we appropriate for DOT and, and then all the member projects, looks like the total this year will be $16,875,476 coming to you. Our seven-year total for Columbia County is $169,623,282. Our total district money is, we're now at over half a billion. We're, we're the five counties, and I get, I say five counties, but I did, I did used to have Swanee and Hamilton. Some of that money in the first four years went over there. Our total's going to be $650,627,164. And I kind of did a little math on my knee out there when I was trying to wait till the rain slacked up enough I could get in here. So, if you divide that among the seven counties, Columbia County has gotten about a fourth of that $650 million, which is, oh, the larger county, you should get the biggest portion, of course. Alachua County probably argue with you about that, too. But y'all are, y'all are getting about a fourth of the money that's split among, among seven counties this year. So, the district brought home $223 million, that's the five counties, $472. We had two really big projects this year that did not affect y'all. One is a new elementary school in Lake Butler. If you've ever been by that school, that thing was built in the late 50s, early 60s, and really needs to be replaced. Only two schools are funded in Florida this year, Lake Butler and DeSoto County, getting a new high school. DeSoto County sits in the Senate President's District, so those are the two counties that got school money. Of course, Columbia's got a little bigger, and they don't fit into that category that the small counties like Union and Bradford and some of those do when it, when it comes to the school money. But anyway, other than that, I won't talk anymore. That was a lot to say, but when he called me the other day, I got to think about it, and I said, well, we got one more year to go, and look for, I look for this session to be just as contentious as the last session. Y'all know about this, the property tax stuff that's on the horizon. Somebody asked me the other day what I thought was going to be coming in. I said, I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you that that train's probably left the station, the governor's driving it, and it's going to wind up somewhere, so we can look for something to be on the ballot. And just like this year, where we had to say, all right, we're going to cut the budget to a half billion dollars, okay, I'm going to protect my pot over here because it ain't coming out of mine, but it come out of somebody else's. We've got to try to protect our, our smaller and our fiscally constrained counties and make sure that... I heard the governor say the other day, making that money up to the small counties was dust. And he was talking millions and millions of dollars, and how do you call that dust? But when you're talking about a $115, $16 billion budget, I guess a few hundred million dollars might be dust, but I don't like to use that word. So, it's going to be interesting. I saw one proposal the other day that just raised all the homestead exemptions to half a million dollars. That would mean a lot of people would be paying taxes if we did that. So, we'll see. My roommate's on that committee. There's lots of ideas and lots of proposals, so lots of, lots of things. It'll be a good final session to go through, so it's going to affect all of us here. We've got to protect ourselves and make sure we're covered, and we'll see where we go with it.
Well, Chuck, you've been there a while, and you sure have done us some good, big shoes to fill a year or so from now. And I, for one, I know everybody feels the same. We definitely appreciate what you've done, and it means a lot to have one of our hometown guys over there in Tallahassee fighting for us.
Well, the legislature, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, I, I know the legislature steps on counties a lot. They step on cities, and they step on counties, and I feel for that, too. But then, I, I, I say with pride when I'm in the top two or three when it gets, comes to getting money, but when, then it gets down to fighting things, and especially when you're not on that committee. I'm only one of 120. So, there was some, we tried to peel back the House at least, tried to peel back some of that crazy Live Local Act, some of that stuff this year. There's another, another thing out there this year where they, and I think sometimes what happens is they try to fix a problem, but it's like dominoes, it affects something else. One of the problems they tried to fix this year was all those folks down around the Gulf Coast, especially places like Pinellas County, there, so, and some of those counties. They tried to fix it where some of those folks couldn't get their places rebuilt. They couldn't get the permits from the cities and the counties to get their places. They tried to work on that, and I don't know if they, sometimes that don't create more problems down the road, too. So, you know, I tell everybody, especially this year, with the session, and I used to call this Christmas in July, but it took me to August to get here this year because the session didn't end in July. That next year is this year, because we'll be back at the end of September, first of October with committee meetings, of course, the delegation meetings, and I don't have Jason out here. We have the date, Columbia delegation. It's coming up here in, at the end of September, probably, first of October. But, so it'll be here before we know it. So, there are things that already that people see that probably aren't working like they thought it would, so we'll be, we'll be trying to chip away at those things and try to make those things, those things better, too. So, it's an interesting process. Y'all know, and believe me, this happened a long time before I got to the legislature. The craziest thing about the legislature is, quite frankly, and officers record it, and I don't mind saying it, is that the, it might have been back when your daddy was there, Robin. Sunshine Law don't apply to the legislature. So, there are lots of, and especially in that last three or four days, there's a lot of wheeling, dealing, and a lot of stuff going on that they put you in jail for.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but that was enacted way before I got there. But it's, it's an interesting process, and it's, it's a people process. You can't get this money without building relationships, and you can't pass policy. And believe me, I deal with a lot of policy as chair of judiciary. You know, I've chaired gaming regulation, I've chaired criminal justice policy, and then I chaired justice appropriations. Now I'm the big overall judiciary chair, which is sort of the overarching committee over all of these areas, whether it be department corrections, law enforcement, FDLE, court system, all those things. But y'all would not believe sometimes, I say it's sometimes not important, what we pass is what we don't pass. There are lots of bad ideas, and we block a lot of bad things, especially in our area with my committee. And you know, there's the law, and then there's the law. And what I mean by that is, there's a law that says it's some regulation, then there's a law that puts you in jail or gets you sued civilly, and that's sort of what my committee deals with. So, lots of things don't ever see the light of day because we block lots of bad ideas. And of course, you know, they'll file a couple thousand bills, and we'll pass probably 300 or something, you know? So, lots of, lots of policy things, but the one thing I always say is, I always use a joke, a blind hog, and I guess I'm tired because I've been hot running all day, but I keep rambling here, but a blind hog finds an acorn every once in a while, so I root around just as hard as I can to bring these dollars home. But it was very hard, very tough this year. Once again, thank you to Senator Bradley for standing by our side. And it got contentious between the Senate and the House, as I see it, and then, so some of the projects were zeroed out on the other side, and we just had to buy them, what we call buy them. And that means, say, the Senate puts in zero on this project, and the House puts in zero on that project, and we never can get them to come to, to meet us halfway and, and fund it, and we'll just buy it. We'll just say, but the heck with it. You going to leave it at zero? We're going to take it out of our money and fund it. We had to do that on, on some of these projects, going both ways, I'm not just House to the Senate, the Senate to the House. Very, very contentious, unlike the previous six years I've been there. So, we'll, we'll see what happens as we move forward. But anyway, and I didn't put all those crazy numbers because the check would have been as long as this row right. But I did put the two most important things that Scott told me when he called me at the beginning of the session, or the beginning of the committee weeks, and he says, we really want to get the Phase Two money for the Swanee Valley Communications Tower, and we want that money for Ellisville to go along with the road projects we got last year, and let's get some more water, water money down there. So with those two projects, total three million, fifty thousand dollars, and that's what I really, uh, put on there because those were the top two things that we worked on this year for y'all.
Thank you, young man. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
We send out a newsletter about this time of the year, every year, so, uh, I brought y'all some newsletters here too. You know, we spend money on those things and you pay the person that prints them and you hope they get where they get to. So I see people all the time and say, I'd get your newsletter this year. And I'm like, well, I paid a lot of money for that newsletter. How can you get it? So I'll make sure. The thing I'm most proud of, if you open that thing up, it's a fold out this year, we've got some of this stuff. You've got your sales tax holidays on the back, is if you'll look, we try to be fair and equitable because we represent so many counties. They're all about, they all got about the same number of projects this year. Now, um, oh, a lot of, none of the, their veto projects aren't included in that. But I'm always proud of that. When you look at that, they all got sort of the same number of projects. Some number are bigger. The two big numbers this year, we really drove our numbers up, was the twenty-nine million dollars for Lake Butler, which is phase one of that story. Do you believe that? Believe it's going to be a ninety million dollar elementary school down there. And the other thing we got, we took on a project, um, right on the edge of our district, uh, because of my long affiliation with the University of Florida, we got them forty-seven and a half million dollars for a new dental school down there. So that drove our numbers.
New dental school?
New dental school at, at, at U F.
We've got fishing poles. They're really good.
Yeah. Chris's project.
There you go, Chris.
Chuck, real quick, uh, how's your parking lot deal coming over in Lusti? Did you get anywhere on the parking lot yet? Where the stocks?
He's down the hallway. Um, not real good. I mean, we've had good success. You know, I got two deals going out there. Trying to build a new museum that we've got a little over two million dollars for, which is very, very close to y'all. So that one in that list I read you a while ago. But, uh, you look at those numbers out there, the five million for the water plant. So much for the Parkway and the railroad spur. It was two seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar clicks on that. But, uh, Stas was trying to help me the other day and he said he hadn't got anybody hardly answered a phone for it, which we need. If y'all could help us with that, um, the new wrinkle in that, and I don't know the answer to this yet, is you know, this, uh, North Florida Land Trust has made a deal, eventually it will come to the state. This wild-like corridor they've been building, working on for years, coming from Ocala all the way to the Okefenokee. Uh, Warehouses made some kind of deal with them, with North Florida Land Trust, which will eventually go to the state. I don't know what kind of wrinkle, because that thing's going to come out of Union County sort of across south of Old Lusti there. Uh, and I don't know if that little piece is included in it. So, uh, but, um, in fact, I'm, it starts outside the, a gentleman from the American Battlefield Trust in Washington, and I'll be up there in a couple of weeks to check on that, had called and, uh, he was sort of not making any progress with Warehouse either. So, uh, we like to gently remind them of the good things we've done for them. It sure would be nice if they'd help us with that, that little project right there.
I think the Frida Conference is coming up there pretty quick and I know they'll be present, so we can.
And we don't want a whole lot, just a little bit to get the cars, uh, where people can get in there and get in and out. And there's also some historical property that needs to be preserved on that south side of the hallway. We took a, took a walk out there the other day and there's a lot of stuff that the state didn't preserve back in, in, uh, nineteen twelve, thirteen when they, and that's the first state park. A lot of people, that's the oldest first state park in Florida. So yeah, anything you can do, help us.
Before you leave, real quick, uh, thank, with yesterday, we just finally opened up the bids on phase one of the, uh, Fairground Project. So you'll be coming to a ribbon cutting here pretty quick. Uh, Mr. Bailey assisted us with that, so it's a lot of, lot of, lot of groundwork. But, uh, it's, it's hopefully next year you're going to sit big.
And it, it takes a while to, uh, you know, you look back and you're about three years back and say, wow, gosh, what are we doing on that project? But you know, everything we get gets funneled through some state agency. And you got to deal with them to get it, whether it's a roof on a courthouse or a generator or a fire truck or whatever it is. So, uh, yeah, we, uh, we put in some for Baker this year. We didn't get it. Senate President got a lot, a lot of fair money down for Hardy County because I sort of soaked it up. And then, uh, we had always helped the Northeast Florida Fair Cali end. I think they have done almost as good as Columbia, but they've gotten about nine hundred and ninety thousand for four, five years over there. So it's kind of like buying a car. It sounds better if you ask for nine hundred and ninety thousand instead of a million.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Chuck, before you leave, I just want to say, from the North Florida Water Utility Authority, we appreciate what y'all done with the grant this year.
Pardon me?
Are you the county representative on this?
I'm the chairman of that board, yeah, yeah. And, uh, if y'all want to, uh, we got a one point nine million dollar appropriation for Ellisville to run water line and a sewer main down there. And, uh, like I say, that's, uh, that's very generous and we, uh, we really need it for that intersection and what's going on down there. And, uh, I just want to say we sure appreciate you working with us on that.
Hand in hand with the, Mr. Kirby, the other stuff we're working on down there with the rest area, the well redundancy project and the road money last year and now, now this. So that hopefully, uh, lot of stuff happening down there. Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Y'all got a hard, it's budget season, I guess. Budget season.
That ain't done to it.
I was at Baker County, I was at City McLean, I was at Union County, I was at the college. When I came to Baker the other day at five, they had started at nine o'clock in the morning and they went to twelve for twelve thirty that night.
We don't have as much money around here in North Carolina.
Well, I told, uh, uh, I did run it to the guy the other day and I told him, I said, you need to come down to some of my counties. He looked at me, they like all that. And I said, what I mean is you find out how much they need if you take a close look at what they do. Uh, I said it in a, in a joking way, meaning that, uh, that they'd be shocked at how hard it is. So with that, I appreciate what y'all do because y'all have very, I know, very hard decisions to make. And this is a tough time of year to always try to, try to fill those holes.
It's very stressful at a time of the year.
But, but I will leave you with this. You look at the bright side and I think of it this way, when we're up there fighting for these dollars, especially in a year like this, whatever we can bring y'all is something you ain't got to pay for after something else.
Thank you, Lord. I've saved your back. Okay. I've seen, he, he's the face of Florida, little man.
I saw her going in the other day.
Thank you, Lord. Okay, uh, Joel, if you would, uh, clear us up on this, uh, public hearing here, where everybody understands, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I think a couple of commissioners have, uh, been, uh, briefed about this, uh, after it hit the agenda, uh, end of last week. Uh, there was a, uh, application to replat a portion of the Oaks, uh, subdivision, some of the common area out there in the PRRD. Um, staff did a little bit further review based on some of the comments we received and we need additional information before you could even properly consider that. We did speak to the applicant. They said they understood our concerns and so they have asked, and you'll notice staff isn't even here. Uh, we would like to table this to a date certain, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. That will prevent us from having to republish. Uh, I will tell the board, we're working with the applicant now to determine if we even need to do a replat. So if we don't end up having to do it, then when we come back on September eighteenth, I'll tell you that, then we won't even have the hearing. But we want to protect the, uh, advertising, so if we could add that motion.
But of course, this is in, uh, my district and, uh, not to go into grave detail because I'll, I'll mess it up. But there have been some concerns and, uh, we just want to make sure if it's necessary to do, you know, we'll do it right the first time. But that, uh, Joel, I believe you said, we will, uh, table this until the meeting on the eighteenth, which will be an evening meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. If, if the motion would be to table this matter until September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM.
And also move on that.
I see you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the next item I have on the, uh, public hearings agenda and matter for public hearing this evening is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two relating to storm debris contractors. This is an ordinance that we've had quite a bit of discussion about over the past several months. Uh, it's finally come for adoption. Uh, this is the ordinance that will require storm debris contractors to register with the county. All that means is they provide their information so we know how to get ahold of them if there's complaints. Uh, and to have a red, a valid registration number before they perform storm debris cleanup, uh, during a declared state of emergency. This is intended to cut off, uh, the, the pretty expensive and extensive problems we had during our last bad storm. Uh, you guys will recall that we had for-profit contractors that were leaving very, very large amounts of debris, uh, in our rights of way, left the county to clean it up at a substantial cost, uh, and they are not actually permitted to do that. Uh, FEMA doesn't like it. Nobody likes it. And so this is our effort to try to head that off. Um, everything that's been in previous drafts is in this proposed, uh, uh, final for adoption. Uh, but again, Mr. Chair, we do need to open a public hearing on it, see if there's any comment, uh, before the board can vote to adopt.
Okay. Uh, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody here to speak for or against ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two? Not seeing none. I declare the public hearing closed. Board wishes of the board and a discussion. I, uh, I started off, I've been, I'm one of the proponents behind this everything and, uh, I just had a conversation with a contractor that was questioning on, uh, I spoke with Joel prior to the meeting. So, uh, this is a much-needed, uh, ordinance. I think everybody's had time to look at the ordinance and, uh, uh, the local vendors are in supportive of it in a big way. We're going to actually put meat on bone towards that we can force this. And it's a necessary evil because I don't know that there's a way to even track how much money we spent due to the ill fate of these, uh, contractors coming in and out. So, uh, anybody have anything like to add before we put it upon a motion?
I think, I think it speaks for itself. I mean, you know, when you have, when you have a big disaster like this happens and everybody's normally from everywhere comes to help clean it up. So they don't care who's going to pick up the mess off the road. All they want to do is get the money, put in their pocket and leave. So I think it's a good ordeal. I think it's even going to help people here. And I've talked to a lot of guys that pick debris up, all that kind of stuff, and they said they thought it was really a good, a good thing. So I, with that being said, if there's nothing else, I'll, I'll turn the motion to approve. Say.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this point in time, I'll seek a motion approval of the consent agenda. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Adoption of the consent agenda. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item, um, back in the spring of the year, uh, we had a workshop as it relates to some guidelines when we go into the storm season. I took the data out of that workshop, took a shot at getting it passed, basically the information, whatever reason, we had some problems with it. So two commissioners reached out as it related to some amendments. Patrick, go out to help me. Oh, I got it now. Okay, district one, paper products, toilet paper towels, paper towels, hand sanitizer, et cetera, to delist the supplies for the community centers during storm season. I think that's a reasonable reach out. For some of these other items, I've reached out to attorney and Joel has asked me to help him with these. Um, I, I think we're kind of plagued with some charter violations or Florida statute violations. Could Joel, do you help me with the first one?
So, yeah, I mean, the, the, the markups indicate, uh, some desires and, and again, I think they're laudable. I think there are things that we all would want to do during a state of emergency. But my concern is the same as it was in two thousand seventeen, is that we run the risk of running afoul of Florida law with respect to public expenditure on private property. You know, I, I, I said, made the comment, I think we were having our workshop out there at the EOC that, you know, I agree some of this stuff is stupid. I, I mean, I, I'll personally speak, if, if it's up to Joel, the stuff doesn't apply, but it is the law. Um, and it's important that we follow it. Now, one of the things that Kevin and I talked about, we've been trying to thread a needle. There is, uh, an opinion of the Attorney General that says if the county determines that it is a valid, uh, uh, county, it's in the county's interest to make sure that private right of ways are passable, right? Not that they're improved, not that they're fixed up, but they're passable. Kevin, which car do you use as yours? Either Honda Accord or some key, or some, Kevin has an idea. That if the board agrees that it's in the public interest to keep roads passable, then we can spend money for that. And that's, uh, pursuant to a, uh, one of the cited opinions that I, that I have my memo there. The issue there though is the way the statute, with the way the Attorney General qualified that is if the board determines, right? Well, typically what we've done is we've had to go out and make an assessment, come back in, the board votes on it. That doesn't really work practically speaking. So the way we're trying to thread this needle is have the board adopt a policy that says where people in the field determine that a road is not passable, go ahead and do it. So have that be the legislative determination that it is in the county's interest that rights of way, public or private, be made passable. Y'all remember in the last storm event, we had cut and toss operations and we didn't care if it was a public or private road. Right? If a tree was down on a right of way, we, we cut and tossed it. Didn't make it real pretty, didn't make it real clean, didn't overdo it, but we made sure people could get in and out. Because the consequence of not doing it that way, uh, even though we're legislative, even though we're legally authorized to do it, would be those people would have to be trapped wherever they are for two or three days while we come in and take a vote. I don't think anybody wants to do that, right? I think we all want to be able to say that staff are empowered to go out and do what they need to do. The way you do that is through this policy. So that was the issue with, uh, doing debris cleanup. With respect to improving private roads or bringing or, or restoring storm damage to private roads, it's sort of the same analysis. Um, you have to show that it's storm-related damage. You have to show that it's in the public interest and you have to jump through those hoops before we can go out and do it. You also have to, uh, in accordance with the, uh, recommendations of, uh, AG Bondi back in, I want to say twelve or thirteen, get written authorization to be on private property because if you don't have it, you can be charged just like anybody else can be charged with trespass. And a criminal charge of trespass for a county employee would not be a good thing. And our experience has taught us, a lot of people will not consent to us going on their property. So what we don't want to have is people responding to a storm, they're on private property, they're doing work, and here comes the sheriff. And under Florida statute, under the, under the relevant chapter, it's, it's a crime. So we don't want to do that. We don't want to be in that situation. The solution is to have very simple written releases. Here's your name, here's your partial identification number. Do you consent to the county working on your property? They sign it, we're off to the races. Again, something that could be handled at a staff level. And I think those were my major concerns. Was there any?
The only one you missed was the pumping.
Oh, it would be analysis on pumping. Okay, so back after Debbie, uh, when Hal Earth was still the attorney for Swanee County, he actually wrote to the Attorney General about that very issue. We generally cannot pump private property unless we can prove and the board agrees that the water or the water causing the damage was improperly diverted from public land or there was a lack of accountability. So if, you know, we, we didn't engineer a drainage system correctly or something like that and it caused water to flow onto somebody's property when it shouldn't have otherwise, then we're allowed to go and pump it off. If it just naturally flows there, the Attorney General says, that's an act of God, that's a private problem, that's for the private property person to clean up. So we've struggled with that too. We've done, I think, everything we can to pu- to pump public facilities as much as we possibly can. And if it just so happens to benefit private facilities that are around, so. I think that's how we've tried to navigate a few situations in prior storm events. Um, in terms of, hey, let's deploy some pumps and go pump out somebody's backyard, it is very clear we're not allowed to do that. And, you know, I was, it's funny because all this is happening and, uh, Tuesday I had lunch with my first grade teacher, a lady named Janet Nagel. Remember I mentioned her name like last week? And I just happened to have lunch with her. I hadn't seen her in probably two years. And, uh, and I said, your name came up. She says, why? I said, because you're the one who taught me that if I want to bring candy to class, I have to bring enough for everybody. And if I don't bring enough for everybody, I can't bring any for anybody. And if I don't bring enough for everybody, I can't bring any for anybody. And she says, yeah, I used to say that. I said, well, it's the same concept in something that I'm dealing with right now. And that is actually how it works, right? So it's, we, this goes back to our taxing authority. We have the authority to tax, but under the Constitution, because we're obtaining that money from the general public, we can only spend it for the general public. And so you cannot spend it for private purposes. And for whatever reason, the Attorney General has come down time and again saying, when you cross from public property onto private land, you need a legislative determination that whatever you're doing on that private land serves a public purpose. Again, not Joel speaking, that's the Attorney General's, AG Butterworth, AG Bondi, this goes back to the 70s. None of this is now. So I appreciate, again, I think the notes are laudable. I think, and I, was it Commissioner Ford?
Yes, sir.
And again, I don't disagree with Commissioner Ford at all.
So my question, so my question would be, I know in the past, we pumped water off private property.
Off where?
We pumped water off of private property on driveways. I know we've been on private roads doing work.
Okay.
So you're saying now we would break in the law when we're doing all that?
Depending on the circumstances, we could have been.
No, sir, if I may.
Again, I'm not aware of every single project, so.
Right, under the state of emergency, and Joel, I don't want to speak as an attorney because you and I had this conversation. What we're saying is, under your state's emergency, you do have relaxed guidelines, but not completely relaxed. So when we were doing those acts, I'll give an example. If we're out there during the state of emergency and the guy say, okay, this person literally, this private road, they literally cannot get down this in a Honda Accord, for example. Yes, sir. We run out there, drift a few loads of millings down it, and in my opinion, that's okay. I think it is in a gray area.
No, no, it's, that's not even gray. That's what I'm trying to say is if we adopt a written policy that says making the roads passable is a county purpose. Let me finish up because I'm answering, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Ford, and you're exactly right. If it was blue skies and we're out there doing that, big no-no.
I'm talking about the state of emergency.
You're talking about state of emergency. The Attorney General Bondi did this. This was more recent. This was in 2012, 2011, something like that. If you guys say, as a matter of policy, making private roads passable, so not improving them, not making them pretty, you know, cutting and tossing, pumping, dumping millings, you're just making sure that somebody can get from point A to point B, all you're doing. If you make a legislative determination that that's in the county's interest, staff can go do it. What we're asking for with the policy that Kirby has put together and that I've helped him with is just say that as a matter of policy for this board, right? Under declared state of emergency, making private driveways passable is a county purpose. We now have what we need to overcome any argument that you're improperly spending money. If you don't have the blanket policy, then we go under state of emergency. I've got five different commissioners coming to me with 50 different roads. We need to put this on to a special meeting to have these approved for pumping. I think that's, that's where I'm trying to say we're trying to thread the needle. I don't think you guys want to go through that process and you don't want people to sit in their houses for two or three days while you vote on it, right? Vote on a policy that says, staff, go out and clear these roads when we're under state of emergency, and I think you get past the issue.
Well, if I'm reading this policy right, though, it's, I'd have to pull it up. I don't have to pull it up. It's saying that the homeowner has to call Public Works to get anything done. They can't call me and I can call Public Works?
So, so yes, they can. No, okay, and I might have misunderstood the note. 100%, I would expect y'all's phones to be blowing up.
I understood if they call me, I'm breaking, I'm doing a charter violation or something.
No, 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 no. I get, I get what you're saying. And I think I get the confusion.
I mean, I was just saying, we've been breaking.
So we have always, 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 ever since we went to the work order system under Kevin Kirby years ago, commissioners can put in work orders all day long, right? So, yeah, somebody reports to you, hey, my road's flooded, duh-duh-duh. Absolutely send it up, send it through, don't hang up the phone and say, you got to call Public Works. You originate the call absolutely, hey, I got a flooded road down here. Commissioner Hollingsworth, I think that was most of what he did in our last storm was just, this is flooded out, this is torn up, this is relay, relay, relay. So, yeah, 100%, you'll still do that.
You need to check the wording because that's what the wording says.
Again, Commissioner, I'm just, I was told, hey, we're worried about these issues. I just want, and again, if you look at my note from my memo earlier this week, I don't make sure we talk about it. Y'all voted to do whatever you want to do, but once we've talked about it, do whatever you want to do. I think we need a written policy, we need an adopted policy, though, because in those, when it's not blue skies, right? And we're trying to decide what we are not going to do. I think it's better just, oh, do I need to vote on this? No, y'all voted on that back in August. Y'all, you're good to go. Let the staff go.
And I just want to explain that. The reason I'm so concerned about this, I have a lot of private roads.
You do.
I have a lot of constituents on private roads. Everett should be concerned about this too because he has a lot of constituents on private roads. I know the other three commissioners don't really have no private roads. But this is a big issue for District Two and District Four, I think.
Y'all got the majority of them. I mean, y'all have the majority of them.
Exactly. We have all of them, pretty much. 99% of them. So this is a big issue for us. And we have a lot of constituents calling us, raising cane, you know? And my thing is, during a state of emergency, we need to help these people somehow. We've got to help these people. We can't just say, we're going, y'all live on private property, we're not going to help y'all.
No.
That's, that just can't happen.
And I'm with you, Commissioner, that's what I'm saying. So I went and updated the research from 2017 just to make sure it was still consistent. And again, the cut and toss operations from last time, those were new. You know, so we're trying all the time to push the envelope. I think by adopting this policy for emergency management, for states of emergency, you're going to crack that nut finally, right? So, hey, look, I've got, you know, who knows what kind of an obstruction gets in a road? You know, maybe somebody flips a car or something during the storm and, well, if we have this, we can make the road passable. So we could, we could pull equipment out there, move that car. I mean, we could do anything we need to do in the interest of public safety as long as you guys say that that's what you want. That's what the Attorney General says.
So let me ask you a question. If you've got a scenario that people blocked in their house on a private road and they can't get out, you got, made a tree down, got a railroad washed out, whatever. I've got to go get every property owner of that road to sign a paper before they can go out there and fix the road where they can get people out of it?
No, 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 no. That's a life safety issue. That's going to be, and that's a good question. What we're talking about with private property owners given authorization, if we have to go in there and do more extensive work. So we have storm damage, let's say. The example I use is that double box culvert in District One that washed out a few years ago. I think that's the only one I've ever seen that actually got voted on and actually got done. We actually went out there after the storm to do restoration work. You need authorization from those property owners then. But no, during the, it's kind of like hot pursuit with law enforcement.
I think you need it for pumping, too, wouldn't you?
And if you're going to do pumping, if you're going to do anything that's, you know, more routine. But again, if you're pumping, though, Commissioner Hollingsworth, to make the road passable, I would take the position you don't, because that's more like a hot pursuit issue. It's a heat of the moment, it's a life safety issue.
Unless it pumps it on some other man's property, that's what I'm worried about.
Well, and we have to look out for that. That's another thing. When we're pumping, and y'all understand this because we've been through it before, but when you go to pump, that water has to go somewhere. And I think last storm event, we were lucky because the rain wasn't quite so bad. But when we have terrible rain events, there's nowhere else for the water to go.
Sometimes there's nowhere, I mean, whatever it deals with every storm.
But I think top priority, Kevin, I think your, Kevin's priorities have always been public infrastructure and roads and drainage systems. Get those cleaned up as best we can, then life, you know, then we go out and we pump to make sure people have access. And then we start working on moving water around to get it out of our basins.
I mean, I like this being in a policy because we've been all over the place, all over the map on this during hurricanes. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know what we can do, what we can't do, because it seems like every time we could do something different.
Yeah, well, and that's what I like about this. You're exactly right. Blue skies, plenty of time to talk about it. Normally, we're talking about this, we've got, you know, half our constituents that don't have power, half the people can't get to them from their house, we're trying to figure out how to clean up debris, we can't have a policy discussion at that time.
And in all actuality, we're not clearing it for, and it will be cleared for the people to drive down it. But the main thing we're doing is clearing it to where emergency personnel get down there and some have a heart attack. And if ambulance can drive down there, a Honda Accord can drive down there.
Well, we got roads right now where everything will drive down. That's true. I can guarantee you.
So what this will enable you to do, though, and, you know, again, it's just passability, right? So it could, you could have a little washout that creates a rut in the middle of the road and causes a Honda Accord to bottom out. Again, Kevin's trying to use a fairly low standard, right? So we're not saying a four-by-four, we're saying just a regular car needs to be able to get in and out. So it helps, by adopting the policy, you're helping staff have more latitude to be within the law, but do more. And that's what we're trying to do. Do as much as humanly possible without breaking the law. Guys, 99% of your constituents aren't going to complain about anything you do. What I'm concerned about is the one who hates the government and he sees a county truck go down the road and he says, I'm calling the sheriff, I'm calling that county attorney, I'm calling my commissioner, somebody's going to jail, I'm suing everybody. And, you know, guys who just want to watch the world burn. You guys have, I mean, you're just.
But he'll be the first one to call the police or call us when he needs something, yeah.
But, but that's what we have to worry about because those are the guys who can actually throw a wrench into everything and mess everything up for all of us. So I get it, 99% of your constituents, come out and cut these trees, haul them, do whatever you have to do. It's the, it's the 1% out there who are going to fuss at what y'all do that can really mess it up for everybody. So again, Commissioner Ford, I appreciate all your notes. I think your heart's exactly in the right spot. I think if all of it, if there was no Attorney General opinions, if there were no Supreme Court cases, we would do what you said.
Well, that's my job to represent my constituents.
100%, and I don't want you to feel like.
And this is a need for my district, you know what I'm saying, sir?
100%.
That policy is going to protect him from getting messed up.
Protects him, it protects me, it protects all five of y'all, protects the county treasury, it protects everybody. And it helps us to get our FEMA money, too. We can show this policy to FEMA, why were you on private property? My board told me I could.
It was adopted for this specific reason.
That's right.
Kevin?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, let's kind of put the puzzle together how this started. As you indicated, Mr. Ford, it's a hot mess when it happens. We started off with the folks that actually make the sausage on our side, the team. We sat down, we collectively come, okay, what's always been a problem, what's been argued, what's been debated? We put all that together. And I captured all the level A through whatever, and, you know, y'all saw all that. The final step was, went to that guy right there for legal review to clean up. And Mr. Ford, I agree with you 100%. It aggravates all get out when you just want to do the right thing. But he is the attorney, says, well, we got some bells and whistles to drop through. But the bottom line is, the purpose of this policy is to make it smooth, protect us, and give staff the ability, when I was getting ready to say want to go, to make those gray area moves. But I protect it now by a policy. Before, I was on my own. You guys could have come back anytime and just disagreed with me, said, Kirby, you shouldn't have done that. And, you know, catching on some little weird statute or whatever. This policy actually protects your team, my team, when you're in this. So with that, Mr. Chair, what I'm simply asking for is to approve the April 3rd as it was provided in addition to Mr. Paul Neil's community center necessity. So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All, any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye, all opposed. Before you go on to the next thing, Kevin, Rocky says something, I've got a feeling somebody, some of us may not have caught. But Rocky's exactly right. There's roads with them blue signs on them today that are almost impassable. I went down one in your district day before yesterday. And, you know, we got a plan in place for that. And unfortunately, it's a very, very high cost. And I'm sure that group probably, you know, has looked at it, you know, because I know you did a good job going out there and trying to get the point across. But it's an unfortunate situation, but it's a. So Joel, before, not to drag this thing out no farther, but my point is, can we, on the, on the public road aspect, can we come up with some type of a, and I'm not going to mention Realtors or nothing like this, but this is the point. Realtor A goes out there and is going to sell this house on this particular road, I'm talking about Mr. Ford was the other day. That a Realtor, according to their Board of Ethics, must, if they know that property floods, they're supposed to let everybody know that. If, there should be something in that, if it's nothing but local, what, can we even do it local? That when they're selling a property on a blue road, I feel like they're misleading their customer by not feeling them and, okay, just so that you pay attention. Clint Pittman spoke of something today right around the corner from his house. You know, they're going out there paying a half million dollars for a house, 20 acres. And, but them people from Miami, they don't have a clue what that blue sign mean. That ought to be something that the Realtors ought to have to reveal. And I don't know, is it legal? Is it something we need to look into? Because I feel like we're doing everybody an injustice because everybody on this board, most everybody in this room knows you don't buy something on a blue road if you want county services.
So Realtors are regulated pretty tightly by the state, right? They have an obligation to disclose a known latent defect, right? So if I'm, if I'm a listing agent or a transactional broker who's been engaged to sell a piece of property and I know about a latent defect, right, I know that property floods. Not that somebody else knows it and I should have known it, I have to actually know.
Correct.
Then yes, I have an obligation to disclose. My suggestion, if we're really interested in this particular subject, would be for us to go to the Board of Realtors and suggest to them that they might impose on their membership an obligation to list, whether it's on a public or a private road. And then when somebody looks at the MLS listing and it says it's on a private road, that puts the buyer on notice. What does that mean? Well, that means it's private, it's like a driveway, right?
I would go further than that. Here's what I would say. So every one of these roads, when they were established, had homeowner association. Why can't we enforce homeowner associations? Because most of these homeowner associations don't even exist.
So, so you're, if, if it's a, we do have a couple down in Fort Y where the homeowners association still owns the road. Most of the time, though, they do what's called a reciprocal negative easement, which is, you can cross my property, I can cross your property all the way down to the front, you know, to the public road. There is no homeowners association in that situation. And if there was one, it doesn't matter because it didn't own the dirt. Where the association owns the dirt, we absolutely could, right, go through and say, look, you need to make sure your membership knows. You have several, actually, now that I'm thinking about it. You've got some down 18 that I know about. And it does actually work. When you say, look, your association needs to take care of this, they'll usually get back together. And sometimes, I think we had one that actually participates in the private road assessment program.
Yes.
As an association. So you're right.
I mean, my thing is, we should have some kind of authority over these roads still because it says in that contract, we approved it, that they would just keep establishing a homeowner association and upkeep the road and all of them pay into that. We don't enforce none of that. We don't, we don't do anything on that.
So here's, here's where that comes in, though, Commissioner, because I get what you're saying. The, the aspect of the roadway is really about whether or not they're going to dedicate their road to the public or not, right? Now, developers, we don't allow this anymore. We fixed it. Our subdivision ordinance will not allow this anymore, but for about 40 years, it was okay to come in as a developer and say, yeah, I don't really want to pave this road, I don't want to spend that money. We're just going to have it be owned by the association or I'm just going to do this reciprocally. And that was really the question, are you dedicating the public or not? And so what they were telling us when they filed their subdivision plat was, no, I'm not dedicating the public. Once you make that decision, that's now private property. There's no public dedication. And sadly, we got nothing to do with it after that.
Even though HHOA, we don't.
We don't allow it anymore, right? But for a long time, we did. Well, once we sign off on that plat and say, yep, private road, we got nothing to do with it, it ceases to be our business, right, under, under principles of Florida law. We fixed it by adopting a new subdivision ordinance. Y'all did a good job with that. You can no longer do what's all over your district in this county, right? I don't know, other than what we've done, which is establish a private road assessment program. We did the paving, or excuse me, the grading program that you came up with, that was a real good move, you know, this much per mile, as many times you want to do it per year. People don't do it. And so, you know, I'm always open to ideas. If we find other jurisdictions that have done it, we're one of those funny, we're the funny county, right? We're too small to be big, but we're too big to be small. When you look at the way the counties are laid out, you know, counties that are close to our size generally have coasts and all that revenue coming in, we're different. So we're feeling growing pains really before anybody else does, all those counties that are behind us.
Mr. Ford, you know, we're under the LDR review right now. And just as a food of thought, you know, I know they're going to be asking us, we may ought to ask them if that's something that can be addressed or looked at, you know, under the LDR review. Because I'm with you because first thing everybody says, Joel, is civil, you know, because it's among their group, but we, I think we need to ask them.
And this is just one of my thoughts, I'm just thinking about it. So I know right-of-way acquisition is a big deal. We've discussed it, we've discussed meetings off. What if we offer these people, give us 80, 60, 80-foot right-of-way and we'll start grading your road?
And we could, if they wanted to.
And that way, if we ever wanted, we own the property, we have it, if we ever wanted to do a road in there, we would have the right-of-way.
If, if everybody wanted to get together, you're exactly right.
But if it don't cost them any money, they might do it, you know what I'm saying?
And that, that could be something that we just throw out there, right? Like if you and your neighbors all get together and want to dedicate the front 40 foot of your property to the county, that'll give us 80 foot. And once we have the dedication to the public, now you've got the key to lock. I suspicion, Commissioner Ford, unfortunately, based on my experience with a lot of your neighborhoods, is 80% of the people will want to do it and the 20% who don't will mess it up for everybody. is eighty percent of the people will want to do it, and the twenty percent who don't will mess it up for everybody.
And all he needs one, well, not if he's on the end of the road, would you say, well, we would.
If he's on the end of the road, it's fine, yeah, you're right, from the public right away. I, I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Cause I have one right now, there's two at the end of the road, we'll not agree to do nothing.
If they're at the end of the road, you just stop.
Great, and stop right before we get there.
And, and you know, some Rocky, something to keep in mind, uh, for next year's budgeting, we could have a, a, you know, a discussion relevant to that, to, we realize we can't go out there and accept every blue road.
We do not go get everyone up anyway.
We understand that, but, but what I'm saying, because there's gonna be an incurred cost, uh, transportation, you know, to go out there and do that grading, so we would earmark money towards that, and you can only take in so much a year for whatever money we've cost it.
But we're not.
Well, the incentive I would do, because I've, I've calculated some of them, it's costly.
Bring them up, make them sharp. So you want to make them to our standards?
Well, you can just grade them. No, sure, what I was going with this, I would, I would fetch my bone, I would say, look, if you're all willing to donate the property necessary to accommodate improvements, I think that's a reasonable approach. If everybody on the road says, I'm willing to donate the necessary, I would take sixty foot for most part. The county that take over maintenance, if they're reasonable people, they'll give up that little strip of dirt to make that two or three hundred thousand dollar improvement. And I, I understand what you're saying, here's your challenge that always will be when somebody said, up to the county standards. What our experience has been, is if you charge them one dollar, they expect it to look like.
Yeah, yeah.
A county road.
It's, this is a fifty million dollar deal.
Donate the property to us, you're exactly right.
They don't have any investment in it.
We run under a motor grader, for the most part of them, it's ours. But that, that would be the, that would be the way I'd attack it.
So we're not gonna, so this is, we're not gonna have to bring this road up to county standards, we're just gonna go in and hit it.
Okay, Commissioner Ford, if it's our.
Standards, what he's talking about before is lime rocking it ready for painting. We got roads all over the county, we grade right now, that ain't up to county standard, that we own.
As long as we own it, we can do what we want. Would you go out there and say, under the private road assessment?
They want it beautiful.
Absolutely.
Perfect. And if they're gonna flood, private roads are typically gonna flood because they're in areas that, so you're talking about, yeah. It wouldn't, we wouldn't want them thinking it's gonna be like Mayo Road, when, you know what I mean, so.
In, in a perfect world.
I think you might make it more mad than you do making happy.
In a perfect world, every blue road would be a green road. In a perfect world, we could go in and work on it. The fact is, a lot of people have moved to Columbia County, because they want to be down a blue road.
Oh, no.
You know what I mean, so we gotta, we gotta tread that carefully.
But in all fairness, a lot of these private roads is more like a driveway going up to a three and a half houses.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's true.
Okay, well, uh, Mr. Kirby, you're moving on to item number two.
Yes, sir. Okay, on top of picking up limbs and whatnot, if y'all recall, last full round, we got renegotiated with halfway through the storm. Y'all remember that? Contractor said, oh my goodness, I need X more dollars, y'all recall that, that was a bad position to be in. So, we went out for an RFP, and basically, there's a lot changed, but you know, we're gonna dictate X amount of cubic yards per day, we're gonna govern it that with ALDs if they don't accomplish that. We did receive seven, uh, companies reached out. Four of those, my motion is to negotiate those guys, what we did, we're gonna break it up geographically, and basically, they're gonna compete with each other. That way, we don't have one contractor on our side, we'll have X amount of cubic yards a day, suffer by penalties, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm requesting a motion to approve staff negotiation of top four ranked firms.
As a result, okay, so move.
Before we take the vote, Kevin, go back to that slide there. You said top four?
Yes, sir.
Two, one, two, two, and three.
The ones in the yellow.
Okay, I see that, but are they ranked in, one, two, uh, number four is not being negotiated with?
No, because there's two twos.
Right, the reason, we usually do it free, but it was a tie.
Okay, I see, I see.
Yes, sir, so we'll probably wind up with about three firms. Once again, I'm trying to cover a bunch of areas, geographic, the object is, Mr. Chairman, last time, everything was going great, they got pulled to the locations, we were kind of stuck in the water.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see the two twos, you're fine, good. Okay.
I need a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we, do you need a motion on that last one?
We already moved.
To approve the ranking, okay.
If they vote though.
Need a motion to approve the ranking.
I already approved, I already made the motion.
Oh, did you?
Approve the ranking.
No, we did not.
Move again.
You got a motion.
Ask the clerk.
You got a, who's sick? Got a sick, all in favor say aye.
I don't remember if I'm gonna.
I remember the motion. Okay, go ahead.
All right, the next one, we received four bids for paving false road. Uh, slow bid was Kirk's Construction, I have a question for this, motion to award bid number twenty, twenty-five, zero, seven, and contract. Kirk's Construction, total bid amount nine sixty-eight, one thirty-four, oh seven.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. That was pretty close for bidding there.
Yeah, yes, sir.
This was pretty close.
Okay, as I indicated earlier in the workshop, you have three phases, you're currently under construction on. Fordale grade, this is your second job down there, this is your quadrant road to the cow pasture, hopefully it's gonna eliminate all that traffic down there. We received four bids, Anderson's Columbia was low, requesting a motion to award bid number twenty, twenty-five, zero, six, Anderson's Columbia, and to approve the construction agreement in the amount of four million, seventy-four thousand, nine seventeen, seventy-two, and include base bid of three million, four hundred, nine hundred and eighteen, and base bid for utilities.
So move.
So I got, I got a top over here, long story short, we want to do the utilities and the contractor inclusive, sir.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye, aye, all opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, did I understand you said they're gonna do the road construction and the utilities on that road?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so we bid it, we were unsure where the bids were gonna come in, so we did an alternate. What our goal is, and we were fortunate enough to be able to bring it all in at one time, we're gonna build a highway. We were always gonna put chase pipes and all under the road for future utilities. But we went and captured what I call the necessary utilities, like for the busy bee, of what we know is coming. So I did it as an alternate, because I was concerned, we couldn't afford to do both at once, we got lucky, we can. Thank y'all, so move.
Good deal. Uh, the, okay, Joe?
Yeah, I'll go again. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier at the workshop, there was a, an illusion made to this item on the agenda. Um, a couple of years ago, I would told you that what we're talking about here was impossible. But the city has a new attorney, and he pointed us in the direction of what's called an inter-local service boundary agreement. What that is, and Commissioner Murphy described it better than I could, is satellite annexation. It is a form of annexation that allows for you to go out into the county, into the unincorporated county, and the city of Lake City can annex little parcels if we agree to it, okay? So, uh, Cornerstone, uh, I can't remember what they call the outfit that owns a piece of property where they want to develop.
Scott Stewart property.
See, yes, Scott Stewart's property. Um, is very interested in developing their property, uh, under city of Lake City parameters. And so they had asked, well, what's it gonna take to annex to get us into the city? Well, they're very, very far away from the city of Lake City in terms of the contiguous boundaries. So this inter-local service boundary agreement idea came to the forefront. What I have prepared for you, and what you're seeing there, is the, uh, invitation resolution. The way the process works under statute is one of the jurisdictions says, hey, we're interested in establishing one of these districts, and the other jurisdiction says, we think that's a great idea, let's sit down and talk. This resolution is the invitation for that sit-down discussion with the city. The city will then have to ask, adopt its own resolution, saying, yeah, we'd, we'd like to have those conversations. At that point, we negotiate for the provision of all municipal services within the district with respect to the properties that choose to annex, okay? So just because you delineate this district, I'll get into it in a minute, that doesn't mean every single piece of property in that district becomes part of the city of Lake City. It means those parcels are eligible for annexation into the city of Lake City. The inter-local service boundary agreement will lay out who's responsible for law enforcement, who's responsible for fire protection, who's responsible for utilities, who's responsible for roads. All those sorts of issues have to be gone through one at a time, they have to be negotiated, they have to be agreed between the jurisdictions. Volusia County has done this with some of its local municipalities, where they've created these little districts around the county. What it does is it allows for economic development, uh, uh, because it gives those people a choice, you want to be in the city or the county, you just have to decide, right? It allows for you to prioritize your resources away from more municipal areas, like instead of trying to have municipal services for something that becomes more urbanized, you turn that over to the, the municipality, let them run the urbanized areas, and you move back into the more rural things that we're used to, right? So it's a creature of statute, it's legal, it works. If you look at the little map that we prepared, um, on exhibit A, uh, it delineates an area, we were very careful not to have any residential properties included there. Uh, this is the Cannon Creek, uh, uh, area. Uh, you go over to the, uh, R B Park on the other side, you go down to the commercial corner there where, uh, Dr. Matre was working on getting, uh, uh, his property removed from subdivision, y'all remember that? You go all the way across the other side of the interstate and you pick up the Tice property there. Um, and then you come all the way up, go up to where they were talking about putting in the Publix before, up there by Art Butler's easement area, come back across, and then go back around the, the Cannon Creek Park, and then you pick up those industrial parcels on the other side of the interstate. So no residential properties, the idea is, the commercial properties and industrial properties in here, if they hook to city of, city of Lake, city of Lake City utilities, water, sewer, gas, whatever, they will qualify for those city, uh, uh, rates, right? So if you're inside the city limits, you can get their reduced rates. Uh, they will also go onto the city's tax roll, right? We stay in the same position, we make the same amount of money on abnormal assessment, whether you're inside or outside the city. These folks who choose to annex, if they in fact do want to, go under the city's rules and pay city taxes, so.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So how long would this take to negotiate out now?
Uh, probably not long, we've had preliminary discussions, but nothing's been hammered out. The discussions have to involve the police chief, fire chief, our fire chief, the sheriff. All the players that are involved have to sort of have their input on it. Um, one of the major issues, if you think about it, who's gonna get the fire assessment proceeds down here? How's that gonna work? Um, one of the issues that, uh, uh, I think the city has expressed some concerns about is, how do you count the crime statistics in this area, right? So who, who gets dinged if there's a robbery down here, who gets dinged if there's a murder down here, is it, is it city of Lake City, is it the county? Lots of weird little things we have to negotiate, the good thing is Volusia County's done this, I think three times now, they've got three of these little cities. So we're using them as sort of the model to work off of.
Yes, sir. And part of the reason this came up is, with this particular development, um, we were talking about the development standards, and what development standards do they need to do their designs to? And it worked out better for the developer to develop to city standards, so that they could put utilities on the roads and things that we would not normally allow. So that's part of, it allows you to pick and choose what you want, county standards, what you want to city standard.
That's where my question was fixing to go, because I understood Mr. Stewart say a while ago, that they have this design to city standards.
Yes.
They do.
So can he start construction before this is done on city standards, or will it allow that there?
No, no, I, and, and you're, you're exactly right, so part of, again, the impetus for this was that development. Um, we require you to leave your utilities outside the paved road. That's not great when you're trying to maximize your development, right? You want to put those utilities under the road, well, the city allows that. So it's a, it's a, an issue where it allows them to maximize their property if they can develop under city standards. So rather than us waive our standards, or go back and rewrite our codes or anything like that, they said, you know, we'd really just like to be in the city of Lake City, this would work really well for us, and the city's obviously very supportive of this idea. Um, but having the idea and be supportive of it is a different thing than fully negotiating it, getting it right, getting all the details ironed out. So when you look at this resolution, I mean, this is step one, we may not work out a deal. It's possible, right, we go back and forth, the sheriff and the police chief can't agree, we can't get things hammered out, may not happen. We feel optimistic it will. Um, the other thing that's key to that, and following on David's point, none of this is mandatory, right? So you create this district, and all the people in this district say, no, we're fine with being in the county, rock on. Stay in the county as long as you want, you are still a county parcel, you are still part of Columbia County. But if you're within this district and you want to annex, you don't have to go through a full annexation, the ISBA is gonna say, come on, you know, just tell us you want to do it, we'll work out, there's a couple of resolutions that have to be adopted, but it's very, very simple.
So it's voluntary annexation for the people in this area?
It's purely voluntary, and we can actually put into the agreement, and I would recommend we put into the agreement, that there can be no involuntary annexation down here, right? Because you don't want to create a situation through an agreement where you deprive somebody of their property rights, right? Because involuntary annexation is a thing, but we can agree that it won't be a thing in this district. There's lots of things we can work out.
And you know, one of the unique things is that, you know, if they volunteer to not annex, you know, they're gonna pay the higher sewage rate.
And that's right.
You know, so, and with, of course, with the opportunity to develop on north and south, of course, we had that discussion earlier today. But the, the, the cool thing I like about it, it is, in my opinion, far enough out of city boundaries, if you want to say at this point in time, that number one, it's realistic to think that, you know, Jeff Crawford and his group is gonna service this fire area. We, we can, we continue to get that assessment, you know, which is vital to his operation. And, uh, but it's, the, the, the thing I like about it, you know, we develop, we're trying to develop this water utility to point to service rural areas, this opens up a lot of opportunity for county and city, you know, to be able to do such and that. And then, of course, you know, Mr. Stewart sitting over there, he's, uh, he's the one taking the risk right now, you know, I mean, but, but there's been a lot of preliminary discussion. Uh, when I first heard the story, I thought Joel lost his mind, and then, uh, I've never heard such, and I've heard it, they're, they're crazy, but it, uh, but I followed up on some of the information he gave me, and it's, it's pretty unique, and, and it, looking back on it, it opens up a lot of opportunity for rural communities such as ours. And, uh, you know, because us on the water utility, we, we could assume that, you know, heck, we can't afford to go down there and put fifty million dollars in a, you know, plant just to service that one area, you know, just.
Well, and the other thing to keep in mind is the city of Lake City's utility does service there, right? So I mean, there's already a connection there, which is why this city is so interested in doing it, obviously, you know, they'd like to make it more appealing. Um, and then when you look at this district too, if you look at that map, you know, as developed as it is, on the, the east side, hardly developed at all, excuse me, on the west side, it's hardly, I'm gonna turn around, it's hardly developed at all on the east side. So you still have opportunities as folks come down here, you know, for retail development, for economic development. Look up and down I seventy-five on, on Google Maps, you don't have too many intersections that have this much open space that's still ready. So this lets you say, look, we're gonna develop all this under a certain standard, we're gonna have, you know, it's kind of like having an overlay district without having an overlay district. You allow the city, you allow people to have the option to work with the city, to do their permitting, to do their construction, and, uh, it's just gonna give them more flexibility.
Mr. Chair, sounds good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Stuart, come on up, please.
Uh, Mr. Ford had a question about, would I start doing things without it being, actually, annexing, and the answer is no, uh, because it's too risky, like you mentioned, so.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, I want to do that, so what I.
I was just curious, you know, if we're doing this.
But I asked Jimmy Boone about that, I said, how do we do this? He said, well, what would you do if, if it's going that direction, you would order the materials, but you don't start it until it's actually all done and all processed and you're all, or annexed in. So what happens if we don't get it annexed in? He said, we'd have to do a restocking of all your parts, and you and I have to work that out. So that's how we would handle that, is we would, we would not want to take that risk, you know, so we would go through the motions. And then the, um, the city guys we met with yesterday said, if we, if they get this passed and they get together, you think sometime in November-ish, I mean, uh, October-ish, it could be worked out, so that's roughly a timeframe, so, um, but you're right, we would not.
Really, I was just looking out for you.
I appreciate that.
I've been bobbing several of these things before, and I know how stuff pops up. It's like, you know, something comes up, it's a roadblock, you know?
I know, I said, well, what happens if we don't get it done, that's what he said, so I agree, we wouldn't take that risk.
But again, you're still taking a risk, even that, with that, yeah, there's no doubt.
It's a calculated risk.
Exactly.
I mean, that's a lot of money done.
It's, it's a big mistake, I don't like mistakes anymore.
Wait a minute, you talking about fire department, sheriff, everybody else got the gray land, I tried to do a, a combined dispatch with the city and county, that was a year process.
Only a year?
Yeah, well, it was twelve years, actually, I like, working on it.
Commissioner, I, I, like I said, nothing's been resolved in terms of the things that have to be agreed to. But what we all are in agreement on is that both administrations want to expedite this, that comes directly from the city manager and the city attorney. But what we all are in agreement on is that both administrations want to expedite this. That comes directly from the city manager and the city attorney. Um, and I know that I'm going to work as hard as I can. Mr. Mr. Clay Martin, who's the city's new in-house attorney, is basically focusing a lot of his attention on getting this done, because there is paperwork that needs to be done. He's going to focus a lot of his attention. I think the, uh, uh, is it fair to say, Scott, that the city has assured you that they're going full steam ahead?
They are.
Okay.
They, they just. We need this invitation. And so I was glad to see it on the agenda today, because they said that yesterday. When you get the invitation, then they, just what you said, they'd have their meeting, they respond back and forth. And he, uh, Clay laid out, um, he called it teaser or test. He said, we get on this state, go to this state, we have their meeting, this meeting. So he laid out the whole kind of agenda. If this happens, it happens. He said, if we can do that and get the agreements all done, I think we can have this thing done by, uh, October.
All the timeline.
Something like that, so that would work.
Probably, but we don't have a hurricane.
Yeah, it's a little discussion, probably will.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so this time I entertain a motion.
Go move.
Got a motion. Got a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Good deal.
This is something that we have been in discussions with for at least a year. So it's not something that just popped up at the last minute.
Do what we.
We've already covered this one.
I know how hard combined, combined dispatch was.
Okay.
So my items tonight are really easy. The Florida Recovery Obligation Center Agreement, um, they call it FROCK. This is the agreement that helps you make sure you don't misspend money on FEMA, and you can get more of your reimbursement back. You've been involved in this. This would be the third year. We're asking you to re-execute it. Next year, if you wanted to continue, would, would automatically continue, but you'd have to opt out if you didn't. But this is the best way to get back whatever money you spend on a hurricane.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty-five twenty-six Florida Recovery Obligation Calculating Agreement.
Uh-huh, second. Got a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Pass this on to the new employee at clerk's office, okay? Yeah, there you go. Okay.
When she starts.
Uh?
When she starts.
Tomorrow ain't soon enough.
The Florida Fire Marshal offers a firefighter's assistance grant. We apply for it most times. This year, we want to use forty thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for personal protective equipment, and another forty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty to purchase extrication. So we're asking you, it's a hundred percent grant, no matching fund. We're asking you to improve our ability to apply for this.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
And that's it?
Thank you, sir. All right, at this point in time, we got open public comments. Anybody here have a comment? All right. Staff comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Nope.
Any other updates? All right, Commissioner? Mr. Farnell?
I'm good.
I, I have something on this. Um, so we touched on the private roads. And, uh, oh, maybe if they would donate right-of-way, we would take them, take them over. I would like to do more to have Mr. Kirby and maybe Mr. Kraus and, and our attorney kind of sit down and talk about that and bring something back to us at the next couple of meetings, that's something, what that might look like. And one of the things I think y'all should consider is we should set the mileage per year we will accept, because we know it's going to cost money to grade these roads. And the next thing, how much right-of-way we want to require them to give, is it sixty, eighty, seventy, whatever? Uh, and if, if that's something we can work on and maybe bring back before the board.
Commissioner Ford, if you're open to it, you, I mean, I think you should participate in that. I'd be glad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're living the majority of it, that's for sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford, I have an inventory. I think inclusive of the mileage. I think already, I know I've got an inventory of all the private roads. I know I got the miles in totality. I think I even broke down my road mileage.
I, I think Commissioner Ford's point, though, it'll create demand. If you say, look, we can only take twenty miles a year. You know, if you get in front of the line, you'll get your road this year. I, I, I get what you're saying.
Another thing too is, maybe we set the number of houses have to be on that road. Because, you know, we don't want to be working on driveways with two or three houses at the end of them.
That's, that's four miles long. Yeah, that's a good thing. That's a good point.
There's some three and four mile roads down there, got one house.
Mr. Chair, the point of my call is, I think I already have the puzzle right there in front of us, that we can go to work on that for immediately.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank y'all.
Okay. Nobody has anything? You got anything?
Nope, I'm good.
We're adjourned. Have a good evening.